Good morning. Today is April the fourth, time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Could you introduce yourself for the record?
Sean Rain, paramedic.
John Bridge, clerk's office.
Bob Carney, operations.
Mike Corrigan, operations.
Brad Smith, the sessions office.
Steve Robordian, clerk's office.
Richard Beck, development services.
IT guy.
Beth Maughan, treasurer.
Trent Triple, clerk.
Welcome to the meeting today. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, first item up is we have appointments to the Historic Preservation Council, terms to expire on the fourth of April two thousand twenty-six. Carolina Valderrama Echovera and Larry Sundell. Questions or discussions on those two appointments?
Mr. Chairman, I visited with both of them. And so I would make the motion, do you want?
Okay.
I move to approve the two volunteer board appointments as identified on the agenda with the terms of expiration as specified.
And I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, new business. We have some couple of resolutions. I'll open a public hearing on resolution two eight five one. ARPA Resolution Number Twenty-five, adjusting the Ada County budget for the American Rescue Plan Act budget. Is there any discussion on resolution number two eight five one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Tell us.
Just stated, it's, we are refunding our unused awards for ARPA. The projects are complete, so we are returning that money to the grant. There's a total of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty-six, two hundred and seven thousand dollars in return of funds.
Oh, okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight five one and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number two five eight one as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll open a public hearing on resolution number two eight five two. ARPA Resolution Number Twenty-six, for the return of unspent funds and deadline extensions for the use of allowable expenditures related to the American Rescue Plan Act fund budget. Any discussion?
Good, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
It's me. Really quickly, there's two different resolutions because premium pays come from auditors. These are projects. So we also have another project that is complete. We're returning eighty-seven hundred and fifty dollars to the grant. And then we're extending five projects due to various reasons. They haven't been able to start on time or complete on time. So they're just extensions, no cost extensions.
Okay, any other question or discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight five two. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution two eight five two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll open a public hearing on resolution two eight five three, Resolution for the Destruction of Records. Election records.
Getting rid of all the evidence, Mr. Chair.
All right.
No, just kidding. These are standard sixty-day, thirty-day, one-year, two-year statutory destruction requirements that we're going through. We're in desperate need of space in the warehouse. This does not include the voted ballots for two thousand twenty, even though those would technically qualify. We're holding onto those for the direction of Secretary of State's office. But there are some related elections material around the two thousand twenty that would have no bearing on anything if anyone wanted to do an audit for those. So just general destruction of records so we can reopen up some space in the warehouse. So.
Okay.
These are, go ahead.
Go ahead.
These are routine?
Routine. Yep. We, uh, we do them, you'll see these pretty regularly on the agenda. You haven't seen them for a while just because everyone's been nervous about destroying anything. But we're getting back into the rhythm of opening up our warehouse again because we're busting at the seams.
All right. Well, if there's more for the discussion, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight five three. As for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution two eight five three as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have a number of new licenses and a renewal. We have one new license and renewals. Commissioner Daly says there's gonna be an objection to one of these renewals. Oh, you were teasing, okay. Was there?
Somebody served you a bad meal or something?
All right, is there, uh, is there questions on any of the renewals or the new license? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one new license and sixty license renewals. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We have with us our distinguished clerk, Mr. Trent Triple.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, again, standard battle rhythm for us with budgets. We do have the May election that's coming up. Timeline for that is kicked off a while ago, but a big milestone is our first tranche of absentee ballots that will go out this Friday. There's sixteen hundred of them. That's pretty standard for an election of this type.
What's on the ballot for May?
We have library districts, there's some cemetery, just fire districts for Eagle. Just a spattering of small different ones, which makes for extremely challenging election. Because of the ballot types, there are so many of them based off the lines because they don't necessarily perfectly line up with precincts. And we are having a few consolidated places because there are some precincts that have five eligible voters in them. And I'm not gonna stand up an entire precinct to have five voters come in and vote. So we'll combine them with another physical location where they can come in and vote in that co-located combined precinct. But we're, we're working through those. But as you probably wanna know, sixteen hundred absentee ballots will go out Friday. They'll probably hit mailboxes on Monday. And then from there on, we'll have regular updates on absentee requests. And at some point, early voting will kick off and we'll keep you apprised of that.
And people are notified about the uniqueness of what you just described?
They are. We send out notifications for all those that might have changes in their polling place location. We also, it was a struggle Friday, to be honest with you. We had quite a few withdrawals from the ballot. And when you spend two weeks prepping the ballot with hundreds of different ballot variations and at the last second, people withdraw, now we have to go back and go through that entire process again in QC. So we had people working over the weekends to get that all squared away to send off to the printers. So we gotta work, we gotta work.
In terms of withdrawals?
Not hundreds, several withdrawals. Yeah, but when you have hundreds of ballot variations, it affects almost every single ballot. So we have to go back through and QC everyone, which goes to the request that we'll probably put forward in the legislature next year is to clean up some of those deadlines so that we're not crushed by them because if we're gonna send out Yokava voters overseas, their ballots, we can't have people withdrawing the week after we send those ballots out, which technically, according to statutes, they're allowed to do. So we're gonna see if we can't clean up some of those.
Where we get the ballots printed?
Uh, K and H.
Okay. Because we had to get a new vendor because the local vendor withdrew.
K and H was Spokane, was it? Or where were they?
I don't know exactly where they're located.
I think we're doing our absentees as well.
All right, any other questions? Thank you. All right, we have our claims journal for March thirty-first. I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have personnel actions. What's your motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have one in our janitor's sessions office. Do we have anybody here? Oh, we do. Good morning. Hello, Brad. So you're, you're sitting in for the sessions today?
Correct.
All right. What do we have?
Yeah, so we're coming up to our deadline in two weeks for property tax reduction. So currently, we're up to about three thousand applications, which is really good. Last year, we were about forty-five hundred. And we've also kicked off our quarterly proration for homestead exemption. So at this point now, after April eighteenth, if somebody applies for it and the property was an investment property or did not have that exemption, then they'll get a quarterly. So much more accurate than it was before where they would apply the exemption throughout the whole year. So we're kicking that off and, um,
Okay.
Other than that, just a couple. I think we only have four tax cancellations this week, so we're doing pretty good.
You think the trailer can handle that?
Jeez, I hope so.
Four? Okay, well, thank you. Thank you. All right, we have four tax cancellations, which are not really cancellations, but rather adjustments. Do we have a motion on those?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for two thousand twenty, one tax cancellation for two thousand twenty-one, and three tax cancellations for two thousand twenty-two. And authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have with us our distinguished treasurer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Commissioners.
How are you?
Good. The big update since we last met was, is property tax relief. So House Bill two ninety-two, coming law. And an important thing to note on that is that's gonna be effective for tax year two thousand twenty-three. And the reason I say that is because in the coming weeks, we're gonna be sending the tax notices that for the payment that's due in June. And that's, as you're well aware, that's the second half of the two thousand twenty-two payment, but it does cause some confusion, people hoping to see that on their payment that's due in June. That's not true. It'll be reflected on their two thousand twenty-three bill that we mail in November. So just wanted to help make that clear. Otherwise, we'll be meeting with the Tax Commission and IT and prepare to implement this.
How many actually pay partial like that December and June?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Daly, roughly twenty percent, it's over half. Not twenty, it's roughly sixty percent, it's somewhere over half, pay the full amount in December and the remainder in June. More than half pay.
So when you send out that notice, is there anything here clarifies what you just described?
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner Daly, so we typically include an insert and we will again include an insert and we'll specify on there that if, that tax relief will be reflected on the next state, on the actual bill. Yeah, we'll, we'll take that opportunity to address it in that mailing since it does reach a pretty large audience.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Month end, so that's what we do.
All right.
Every week, first month of the week, I guess, the first week of the month.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes for the public hearing two eight twenty-three and the tax cancellation hearing of three oh two. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we next have a grant, a grant number two three zero six. It's an application to Bureau of Justice Administration for Body, Worn, Camera Policy and Implementation Program. It's a grant request for forty-two thousand dollars. Is there any questions?
Sorry, one from the sheriff's office?
Uh, nope. I don't see anybody. Okay, is there any question? It's an application.
I was just curious if we only use grants to get our, the body cams or if those come out of the general fund, but obviously, I think the more body cameras, the better.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve grant number two three zero six A as listed on the agenda. Authorize the online completion of the submission of the grant by Nolan Personnel of the Sheriff's Office and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we next have Expo Idaho. We have two interim events. Do we have a motion on that?
I move to approve the two interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have next up the Parks and Water Race. We have two events. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chairman to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We have now six agreements. I review these agreements. Is there any question or issues to discuss on these agreements? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Uh, I move to approve the six agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the, uh, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have the weekly indigent items. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Service staff as listed on the summary of cases listed dated April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Well, hi.
Hello. Welcome.
Next up, we have miscellaneous item, a weed and pest and mosquito capital project. We have Adam on the bridge and we have, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Chris, so this is a security system upgrade at the weed and pest facility. So it's the Genetech system. We had it slated for FY twenty-four. We have some savings in our five-eighty budget for building improvements for this fiscal year. And so we're looking to move the project from FY twenty-four and FY twenty-three so we can, this is the last large facility that we have for that Genetech upgrade. So the same system we're putting into, you know, public safety and all that kinda stuff. So this ties into our strategy on how we're gonna approach our budget for next year as well, provide some budget savings so we can move some money around for FY twenty-four budget that we're gonna submit.
Are you good with this, Adam?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, and thank you. I would like to especially commend Director Carney for his thoughtful approach to this because certainly we've had our security issues before and our system badly needs upgraded. We welcome this upgrade and thank you, Director Carney, for doing this.
Okay. Need a motion on this, do you?
No.
I just think so.
I just need your blessing.
All right, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, unless there's any other business, is there any other business to be taken up by the board? Hearing none, we're in recess. Hearing none, we're in recess. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, today's the fourth of April, the time is nine, uh, twenty-three. Uh, the Board of Commissioners, uh, uh, sitting as a Board of Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. Uh, all three commissioners are present, we also have with us.
Sean Rain, paramedics.
And we're honored to have him here. Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, first up is the Claims Journal, I'll accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Uh, okay, next up we have Personnel Actions. I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Personnel Actions as listed on the agenda, that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, we next up have, oh, excuse me, all in favor, you've heard the motion, uh, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We next up have the approval of amendments from the Emergency Medical Services District dated three fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second that, you've heard the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we get for the favorite, our favorite part of the meeting, EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Uh, busy couple weeks, is why I haven't been here the last couple Tuesdays. Uh, SCR one oh one made it through the full legislature and was adopted, so. Uh, that was, uh, a good first step in, in coming up with legislation for next session. There was a little bit of opposition, uh, on both the House and Senate side. And, uh, legislators worrying that we were creating more government, but really, it's just re- kind of recreating the framework of how EMS is provided in Idaho. Um, it doesn't necessarily force a smaller, uh, county or city to do anything different. It just ensures that EMS is provided in these areas and some of the areas of the state, there's no EMS, uh, is required to go and, and no coverage. We're certainly blessed here in Ada County, border to border, we're gonna go anywhere that somebody calls nine-one-one, but that's not the case in some of the counties in Idaho, so, uh, that was good. Uh, last week, uh, myself, Mark Babson, and Peter Humlin were in DC and met with the delegation. Uh, we met with everybody except for, uh, Cinder Crapo, who was on his way to Andrews Air Force Base for, for some other thing, but, uh, had some really good meetings with them. We were focused on four topics that, uh, that NA National Association of EMTs had put together. The first one was, uh, a thing called, yeah, the EMS Counts Act, and believe it or not, uh, all of the firefighters in Ada County that are also EMTs and paramedics at the Department of Labor are not counted as EMTs or paramedics. And where that becomes an issue is like with the pandemic, when they start taking these resources that you have limited numbers of respirators and gowns and that kind of thing, they only allocate it based on the number of EMS providers that are counted, and so, out of the six hundred seventy-so odd, uh, EMS providers in Ada County, you know, there's only a hundred forty-seven of them that are my employees that are actually counted by the Department of Labor, so. I know, uh, uh, Cinder Rish, uh, immediately directed his staff to get ahold of the Secretary of Labor to figure out why in the world they aren't counting those folks as EMS providers. Um, so that was the first one. Second one was a, an act called the Siren Act, which, uh, is, uh, a grant fund for small rural EMS agencies to get funding for equipment, training, re- uh, recruitment, and, uh, personnel. That doesn't really have any impact here in Ada County, but we were certainly happy to go down and, and represent our, our agencies around the state. Uh, we, the, uh, we were also accompanied by Chief Way out of, uh, Cootney County Fire and Rescue, and two of his deputy chiefs were, were there with us, but, um, third thing was Medicare extenders, so. Every year they, they have been adding on two percent for rural areas, three percent, sorry, two percent for urban, three percent for rural, and twenty-two point six percent for super rural areas. And, uh, so we asked them to, to continue that, but not only continue it, but we've gotta fix Medicare, you know? EMS is only one percent of the CMS pie, uh, of dollars spent. Um, but anytime, you know, even if they were to not renew these extenders, it just pushes us farther into the, the, uh, insurance not paying for the response itself, and, and, you know, that's one of the issues with EMS is we're housed under the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration at the federal level, which goes all the way back to nineteen sixty-six, when the white paper was written, it was really written based on car wrecks, uh, kinda how EMS started back in the sixties. Instead of throwing somebody in the back of a hearse, let's maybe think a little bit, not, you know, paralyze somebody that has a broken neck. I think that, that's why we end up in, in HTSA, but, um, you know, we've gotta figure out a better way of, of paying for EMS, and, and that's part of what we've been doing with the, the state legislature, because the, the true cost of EMS is being there to respond twenty-four seven, it's not the call that you go on. It's having, you know, fifteen to seventeen ambulances ready to go on that call at any given, uh, point in the day. Uh, the last, uh, ask we had of them was, uh, on May eleventh this year, uh, treatment in place and transport to alternate destinations will expire as part of the pandemic response, uh, where they would allow us to go out and treat somebody in their home, and Medicare would actually pay for that. Uh, they, i- i- if something doesn't happen before May eleventh, then that will expire, and so anytime we do that treatment in somebody's home or take them to an, uh, place other than the ER, we can't bill Medicare for those services, so. We've asked them to, uh, make that a, a permanent change, because it is the right thing for not only the patient, our providers love being able to treat a patient in their home, do the right thing for them when they don't need to go to the ER. Uh, overall, it's cheaper for everybody, so it's, it's a real win-win. Uh, so, those are the four things that we asked for, and, and all those things, uh, were received really well. Um, you know, it was, uh, an, a neat experience, it was my first time to DC, so. Wednesday, we had a little bit of downtime and we ended up walking ten and a half miles. We, we saw pretty much everything there was.
Easily done in DC.
Yeah, easily done, easily done. Uh, but it was, it was nice and the cherry blossoms were in full bloom, and there were tons of people around that tidal basin, but it was a, a neat experience.
They have no snow there, huh?
No, it was, it was warm, it was, you know, in the sixties, it was beautiful. We, we lucked out.
Sometimes they do have snow on cherry blossoms.
Yeah.
I'm glad they didn't this year.
Well, great.
Outside of that COVID-wise, we're, uh, we're seeing a little bit of an uptick, but, uh, nothing, um, too extreme, so.
Okay. I understood there's a bill pending that deals with Narcan and. What's going on with that?
So, it was part of, and I believe it was DHW's appropriation bill. Uh, buried, and we just happened to be down at the State House to hear the, the debate on the floor. We had, none of us had any idea this was in this appropriation bill, and it was actually, uh, Representative Josh Tanner that had it put in there that would only allow these Narcan Leave Behind kits to be distributed to first responders. Um, currently, you know, uh, Department of Health and Welfare, the health districts, um, you know, doctors can get those free kits from DHW and distribute those. Uh, and the timing was interesting too, because I think it was the day after, at the federal level, the FDA approved it for over-the-counter use, so. Uh, you know, you can literally just go to Walgreens and pick one up off the shelf now, but, um, so we, on behalf of the, the Idaho Fire Chiefs Association, we wrote a letter, uh, in response to that bill just saying that we didn't think it was a good idea. Uh, several others have, have chimed in the same way. We did, uh, attempt to have a conversation, well, we had a conversation, uh, with a few legislators that were invested in that language in the bill, and, um, it, the way it was kinda put was, if, if it isn't this way, we're just gonna turn the money back, and so. I'm not sure what the thought process is on that particular issue, but that, that's where we stand today.
So it was appropriation bill for Health and Welfare.
So now it's, you know, but I don't know if the governor's. Sign it or veto it, or?
Well, that's, that's, that's pending, I guess.
Appropriation bills, he normally doesn't do that.
Yeah, that, that'd be a pretty tough thing, certainly with them.
Well, it depends on appropriation, if it's just for a small portion of that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't remember what the entire appropriation was, but it was definitely buried in there, and had we not been down there that day, I don't think we would've known until after it was passed and signed into law.
When I'm not.
Things had changed.
What I, what I thought was kinda strange is that needle exchange thing.
Yeah, and why that language is. It has nothing to do with Narcan.
I, yeah, I know, I, but it, it, uh.
We don't wanna get involved in.
We don't wanna get involved in needle exchanges.
I know.
Not, not in, not in our, not in this EMS.
No.
We'll, we'll try to do the Narcan thing, we're still working on that, but, uh, it's good. You don't have, you don't have all support of the group yet, do you?
No, uh, it's Meridian's still opposing that, but I think that what we're gonna do for.
I think they'll really oppose it if they find out about these needle exchanges.
Yeah, and I, you know, like I, I said, we have no interest in, in needle exchange at all.
I don't why they're even doing that for first responders.
No, it doesn't make any sense at all.
Cause that's more than that, but anyway. Okay, well, so, so that's still outstanding, but, but it, it won't, now is that, is that, because that, that, just as I understood it, just provided the, uh, the, the Narcan and the needles to the first responders, which we get the Narcan anyway, right? So we don't need that bill.
Yeah, we, uh, we, we get the Narcan anyway, so, um, yeah, we wouldn't necessarily need that. That's the strange thing, is it directed it only to first responders, but if you wanna get the Narcan out in the community, it shouldn't just be us. Um, you know, and if it end, does end up that way, we'll have to think about some ways of distributing Narcan, but, uh, you know, I I really hope that something changes in that particular bill, but we'll see. I mean, it's already made its way through the process, so.
Well, the only thing that can change is a veto.
That's all it can be done at this point.
At this po- at this.
At this point, that's, uh, that, that, that's it.
Not gonna change a lot.
Yeah. Well, anyway, any other questions?
Uh, well, actually, a couple of questions. The, the, uh, the Detroit Memorial, and you said some, some, well, several questions, actually. I didn't realize the, the, the Medicaid had these tiered, what's a super rural area?
Super rural area would be.
Parts of Idaho are super rural.
Most of.
By this definition.
Yeah, most of it, like Clark County, I, the, the entire county would be considered super rural. Um, a big swi- even parts of Ada County, Mayfield would be super rural. Um, parts out south of Cuna, unincorporated Ada County. Um, you know, and, and it's all, uh, definitions that CMS has come up with for urban, rural, and super rural. Uh, big chunks of Ada County qualify into rural and not urban. Um, and it, uh, I'd have to, to look at the map again, but i- if I remember correctly, most of Boise was the only true urban area that we had in Ada County. So, but yeah, they have those tiered, and, and it's, uh, really, it's interesting that the different rates, you know, for super rural. Clear up to twenty-two point six, uh, that's a big boost, but it is a big help if they took that away from those rural areas. You know, they, they just hurt worse than they already, uh, are today, so. Um, I, you know, I, we had good reception of that, you know, I think that everybody gets worried when you start talking about funding for Medicare, because it, it's an issue already. Um, but they, uh, they need to come up with a permanent solution, because they just kinda keep kicking the can down the road, and they sign this extension, um, every couple of years, and this one we're asking for two years. Um, we had a, a five-year extension, maybe ten years ago, but it seems like, that they just wanna do two years uh, for the time being, so that's what we asked for.
So, the, the, uh, the state plan, after this memorial, cause the memorial, memorial passed, the next step is to create a state plan, right?
Uh, the, for, yes, uh, exactly. What they, uh, uh, have going right now, uh, they hired planners, so there are six planners, and there was a lot of controversy around this too, because the money had already been appropriated, in fact, I've already met with the planner for the Southwest area of, uh, responsibility, his name is Tim Nowak. But they, uh, they called them planners, but really what their job is to go out and identify the gaps, because we don't know what the gaps are around the state, then it's tough to come up with legislation that's meaningful and that, that, you know, can help everybody or at least help the majority of us, and so, that's what's occurring right now, is these folks are going out and meeting with every single agency in the state identifying where the gaps are, and then they're gonna come back to the table and, um, assist even some counties in coming up with, here's the, our EMS plan going into the future. You know, in Ada County, we kind of already have that in place with access, um, you know, and, and so we probably won't need a lot of help from the state on that, but you think about, uh, oh, Custer County, or, you know, one of these smaller counties that where the, the EMS director up there is wearing every hat in the agency, because there's only five of them in the whole, whole building, you know? Uh, they, they'll probably need a little bit of help on, on putting a plan together to cover an entire county.
And, and, and that's where I was going next, in terms of the, 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 the sup- ser- super rural, that definition, and then uh, uh, and then how it would dovetail in that, you answered that question, how would dovetail in that plan? Which then relates to my last question, as you know, my, one of my issues is PILT.
Yeah.
Uh, which I've talked to Senator Rish's office about.
Okay.
Which relates to this whole CMS, federal nexus, and even, even count rural counties in Iowa.
Yeah, yeah.
That have, that's why I was asking that, super rural.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner David, we actually, uh, had a discussion around PILT funds while we were, uh, down in DC. I, I'm trying to remember, I think it may have been Senator Rish where we talked about that, so I think he had picked up, um, on a conversation that you had had with him. There, it's interesting, in talking to folks around the state, there are already some of them that are working with the ranger in that district for that, that forest, you know? Boise National Forest or Sawtooth National Forest, whatever. Um, and they've got agreements where they'll pay for responses onto that forest land. But it's kind of right now up to that individual ranger of that forest, um, on, you know, who gets a contract for, for what. Uh, and then, you know, I'm not aware of any BLM district that, that has an agreement to respond on that land, which most of our federal land is BLM, a little bit of the Forest Service up in the north, but, um, that was a conversation that we had. And we've actually had that same conversation in the Funding Committee, uh, as part of the, the Sustainability Task Force on, you know, how do we solve this issue, because there are big chunks of, you know, Idaho, Custer County, that it's all federal lands and wilderness on top of that. You know, they, the, the federal government needs to be paying for that support, and people, uh, it's not like it was thirty years ago, you know? The folks that come up now will, um, you know, sprain their ankle in the, the woods, and they expect someone to come and haul them out.
Immediately.
Yeah, thirty years ago, they would've splinted their ankle up and hobbled out to the trailhead, trailhead and drove themselves down to a clinic, but that isn't the case anymore, so, um, but th- those discussions we've been having, and, and we did talk about that idea of getting a coalition of states that um, and, and I had a conversation, I can't remember who, uh, it was from somebody from the Midwest, where they're like, well, we don't have any federal land, I'll bet, I said, I'll bet you have a lot more federal land than you think you do, if you go and look at a map. Uh, and, uh, so, those conversations have started.
Uh, uh, I've talked to Simpson's and, uh, Rish's office.
Okay. Yeah, we briefly.
As you're putting this plan together, you can dovetail that with it.
Okay.
And have that as part of the, of a report, cause that's, that's what our delegation needs, is information.
Yeah.
Where it's really critically important, and if, if the federal government has already delineated rural, super rural as critical areas that they give extra credit for because of the need, then it can dovetail with our report, I guess that's what.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you.
Gary.
That was it.
All right.
That was a lot, but that was.
About, uh, Avamore, oh boy. Save that for another time.
Uh, well, Mr. Chair, you know, I saw that Eagle, uh, annexed Avamore, they're, they're in the process, they haven't completed.
Well, they gotta complete their findings of fact and conclusions and adopt their ordinance, that'll take them.
A while. Um, if, if that occurs, you know, we'll, we'll just have to start the conversation back up with, um, the developer up there, and, and, uh, it's been, we, I talked to, to him, uh, was probably six weeks ago, just saying, let's kind of hold until we get this Eagle thing figured out, because Eagle Fire immediately, you know, they're, they're, they've already annexed that whole area into their district, so, um, that'll become part of the, their response area. Um, and we, we'll just have to work on that Jim County piece, we already have the Boise County agreement in place, but, um, same thing on the Jim County side, and they've met, according to them, they met with the Jim County Commissioners, they didn't have issue with us responding up there, because they have one ambulance and it's in downtown Emmett, so it's pretty tough to get to Avamore from downtown Emmett, so.
I don't think they'll be going over there for quite a while.
No, yeah, I think they're gonna focus on.
They gotta finish up Boise County, which is a lot of.
Yeah.
Lot of properties.
Yeah, 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 they have some in Ada County before they get to Jim County too.
Yeah, yep, on the whole other, uh, west side of the road over there.
Right.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah, yeah, well. All unrest. Anything else? You guys have body cams?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Davidson, no, we do not, we have, uh, uh, dash cams, or what's built into the, the, um, mirror, the rearview mirror in the ambulance, but we don't wear body cams, the issue that we have with body cams is everything that we do has to be protected by HIPAA. And it, it is really expensive to store this video, um, you know, I don't know what the sheriff is paying for it, but, um, even if we were to, to store everything that was recorded on our, on our dash cameras, uh, it was gonna be, I'm, I'm trying to remember the exact number, but it was tens of thousands of dollars a year, I think the last one that we heard was sixty thousand dollars a year just to store the videos, so. Um, but, I know a few EMS agencies around the country are doing it, but the other issue that you have is, uh, then you have to make sure that that storage is HIPAA compliant, if you get a breach, then you're in deep water, so.
Hmm, how long do you store the dash cam footage?
It depends on the event, so if it's a lights and siren response, we store it for thirty days currently. Uh, and the, the camera itself, if they're just driving down the street, it doesn't upload that to a server, it stays on the camera itself. And it's overwritten about every ten to twelve days, depending on how busy that ambulance is, the one out in Star probably gets overwritten, um, every sixteen to eighteen days, just depending on, uh, how much time they spend driving, but, um, yeah, it's, it's really, really expensive to, to store that data. And a lot of it, you're, it's not useful at all, so it's just spending money to keep something on record, but, um, so no, we, we haven't, and I, I would certainly prefer to not go the route of body cams. You know, we do occasionally, uh, if PD is with us, you know, they've got their body cams, and, and we, we've, um, seen some footage from uh, police's body cams on, you know, something that occurred on one of our scenes, but it's over at the day.
Gary. All right. Anything else before we close it out?
Not for me, sir.
All right, hearing nothing else, we'll be adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.